Ladies and gentlemen, I've started recording.
But I do believe that most of the anti, the stuff against, that's constab, is personally an hostage, as my personal view, it's not as, it's personally an hostage. And there's a point to that, but, you know.
Six thirty, so we'll call the Jobs and Economic Development Committee to order. Clerk, would you call the role?
Mr. Arsman?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Rattler?
Present.
Uh, we have a summary of proceedings, I suppose everybody's had a chance to read that.
Yes.
Do you understand a motion to approve or disapprove?
I think we're gonna, personally, I think we should address that at our next meeting.
Okay, let's hold it till next meeting. Uh, we have no old business for tonight, uh, so we'll step right into the new business. We have one item of new business. Clerk, would you read that?
Resolution to adopt a citizens' participation plan in conformity with the requirements of the Community Development Block Program, CBDG, and declaring an emergency.
I see, Evelyn, here's the heading from the last slide.
What you might not know is that you actually have a formal plan that we use for the block grant, you, uh, you probably know it, have to do it every year or so, you know, the process, but it is written down in a format, and this is, they, the state of life has to formally, re-adopted maybe over five years, just to kind of remind people or let people know that maybe weren't aware of it, uh, that we do have a process and that way it goes on record. So basically, the block grants, just as this particular committee, uh, knows it far more than anybody, because all the projects come through, but the process will be that we, we have a public hearing, which we've done already, for example, we put that in the note in the newspaper, we then so, uh, give out applications to people, spread the word, uh, try to have, uh, citizen input, for example, I think it, I think I narrowed it down, that next, uh, Tuesday evening, we'll have a meeting here at City Council with a lot of the Neighborhood Revitalization Association, and kind of get some suggestions to possibly go after a neighborhood revitalization grant, uh, we'll redistribute to City Council and all the departments, the applications that have been wanting to suggest a project, then it will come to Jobs and Economic Development Committee for, um, kind of first blush presentations, uh, then you guys, this committee will make a recommendation at another meeting, where you kind of muddled over the, uh, the potential budgets and narrow down the projects, and then we'll have a second public hearing, which again will be put in the newspaper to get people's, uh, feedback on whether they like it or not, or, you know, whatever, and this whole transparency of the process of selecting projects, and then when we do pick the grants, we do have a component process as well, so this, that's what this, uh, block grant, um, plan, or citizens' participation plan spells out, that way when I retire, you all know how we create what we have always done, so.
I have a question, um, there's one here, it says, "In declaring emergency," when does this have to be done?
Actually, you know, to be honest, it's not as necessary, it doesn't have to be an emergency, I've put it at that, I mean, habit, but there's not any. And the reason it was brought up, just to add, as we did have a monitoring visit from the Department of Development for our FY twenty-one grants, and, uh, they said, "Oh, you don't have an updated version," so that was one, you know, day of monitoring, so this will, now, once we adopt it, that will be, you know, our next couple of monitoring should be good.
Thank you. So there's nothing going to be monitored between now and?
We're in our FY, we're in twenty-three year right now, so, and then you apply, this year, you'll be applying for year twenty-five, so, yeah, well, this should keep us good for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-five.
That's what I'm asking, so, the, just evaluating whether to keep the emergency on or take it off?
You can take it off.
Okay.
Which is this committee?
Um, I think we should pass this on to council, um, with, "In declaring an emergency," out, stricken out of the title, and section two to be a normal section of regular legislation versus emergency legislation.
Second that.
Clerk, would you take a role?
You don't need any more specifics than that, like, that's pretty standard, okay.
Yeah, the standard non-emergency clause is pretty good, but the emergency clause has-
Yes.
-some additional elements. Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rattler?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna pass that on to City Council with, uh, those recommendations on it?
And while she is here, and I know that she spoke to us, oh, a few meetings ago, when, when does the process for this year's CDVG, I know the process is started, when, when is the next thing or two, so that we can expect?
Yeah, off the top of my head, so, right now, I believe we have that people can submit their applications till about, like, April twelfth or something, so, then after that, by the end of, probably by the end of April, I'll come back with you to try to set up, uh, a time where you can start, maybe you had two committee meetings in a row, to go through those projects that were submitted by the, twelfth or fourteenth, whatever that Friday is, and then, um, so, yeah, you're gonna have two, so that puts us into May, about middle of May, and then the grant itself is due, uh, June fourteenth, I believe, so, uh-
Okay.
So we'll come, like I say, I think the end of April, first part of May, it should come back to this committee.
Okay, and then, for the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant, that we are going to apply for to continue, um, I believe to continue the walking path, correct?
Yeah, what we were thinking, or go ahead.
It, is there, I'm trying to keep my grants in my head, there have been a lot, and is there extra points for that, that, that is a competitive grant, right?
Yes, competitive.
Um, for, um, putting, for us putting in money?
Not anymore, there used to be.
Okay, okay.
For a moment, I believe that that's not off the term.
Okay.
That right, what, uh, Mr. Rattler is, is saying is that it used to be that extra points, you know, for leveraging your own formula grant against it, but I think right now they're not.
Okay.
Which means you could pick it, that as a regular project, and then also use that toward.
Okay, 'cause it, kind of, what we had done a couple times, is we used a CDVG in the same census tract-
Yep.
-and leveraged that with the other, and then we, we got that both times that we've done that, that I can remember. Okay, so that was kind of where my mind was going, but, um-
One of the things, a good thing, um, for instance, the city is already planning to do, I believe, one aspect street, if I'm not mistaken, so-
To, to do what with it?
The street rebuild?
Yep, reconstruction.
Reconstruction, so that's got a little bit of everything, streets and your sidewalk.
Okay.
And primarily, I think, with OPWC funding, but it would be really great to try to, um, since you usually, with that OPWC, you have to have some local contribution, if we could use some of the Neighborhood Revitalization Grants, since that usually goes from, like, five hundred thousand to seven hundred fifty thousand, you know, now, I can't remember what, um, which one that is right now, but, um, you know, take a chunk, put it toward the street, that will help your local, and then you still have a bunch of money, you know, to pick other projects, and that could be, see where we are on the trail, if we want to continue that, do we want to do sidewalks, again, that's, we ought to do at least projects just with the MRT, I think, Neighborhood Revitalization Grant, and then even if the projects that you select for the formula, if that's in that same area, you know, you're just, okay, they're going home, you know, that's fine, too.
Right, okay.
So.
'Cause and even thinking about this, what I had, um, one of the projects envisioned is, um, just make sure we have proper sidewalks to both the homeless shelter and to job and family services.
Right.
Um, I just think that those populations probably have less vehicle transportation than any other populations out there.
Right.
And, um, so that's in the same census tract, I'm gonna assume that all those grants are.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, that would be great.
So if I could just pre-pitch for that, then?
No, I, I agree, I mean, well, streets and citizens stay the same, and maybe even up, uh, Leader Street going that way, you know?
Yes, yes.
I mean, that would, that would tie, we could say that ties in with some of our active transportation plan, it ties in with, obviously, getting people to jobs, recreation, a lot of different things, um, so, no, those are, that's kind of the purpose of the Neighborhood Revitalization, is do a little bit, a bunch of things that actually tie together.
Okay.
Um, and I think that we could make a compelling case for things such as that, and we'll see if the citizens have any other good suggestions.
Okay.
I, I think it was, a couple weeks ago, you mentioned something, that property on Joseph Street, you know, where the company used to be, there's something being done there?
Yeah, right now, we had a, um, a phase one environmental study, so that's just kind of a historical study, we did get that result, that report back on, uh, Friday, and then it says it warrants doing a phase two study on that, so we will look into, we mean, RPC and the land bank are gonna look into some, uh, Ohio EPA funding for phase two studies, and that would be, like, actual ground, you know, testing of soil, or, you know.
Sorry.
Looking for any contamination.
Now, if you, you probably remember, so, you know, the property was cleaned up-
Right.
Um, with, with EPA money, and it was supposed to be good when they left, that was my understanding.
Well, that's what I thought, too, but having those reports, they said, "No, they only cleaned up whatever it was they were supposed to do."
I know asbestos was, like, on top of the list.
Yeah, I'm thinking that was in, since that was all above ground, that's where that report, or that's where that cleanup ends.
Oh, so I had-
Right, and so the concern, because the property is falling behind in taxes and such, is that it will eventually be, you know, lost, and, and we'll see it again potentially at the land bank, or the city, or something, we'd kind of like to know what we end ourselves into, if, if we did accept it, um, so, I think a, a phase two is warranted, that way you know if there's any other ground contamination.
It'd be nice if something could be built there that would be positive, and-
Yep.
It's such a large area, too.
Thirteen acres, and that's a good chunk.
I, I mean, just, there's so much could be done.
Like if our other plan fell through like a firehouse.
Yeah. It's where most of the fires are.
Gosh, that puts you on the right side of the country. But, yeah, so that, that's the thing, is we're kind of keep plugging along, because again, we, what we don't know then hurts us, because it, it makes us hesitant to take or do, or anybody else to invest in it as well, so we'll have to get all the skeletons out of the closet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no other items, new business, matters on, not on the agenda? Anyone have anything? Okay, see none, adjourned, six forty-three.
I'll say something, I'll learn to speak French one of these days, only thing I know.
I missed it, too.
Christian was asking me, he's like, "They didn't do it," I'm like, "I don't."
But I don't think they made a motion in a second.
You never got a second, 'cause Ers said something, and I don't, and then Prater started talking, I don't think he had a second.
I'll find out when I listen to him.
He took a roll on something, I was going to take a roll, he said we're going to council, I'm like, "Okay."
That was the intent of the committee, I thought, that they voted, they just didn't make a motion in a second, is that what we're saying?
That's what I'm remembering, but I wouldn't really pay much attention to it.
He told me to take the roll, took the roll.
You fellows all right, yeah?
Sure.
Yeah? Six forty-five, we call Legislation Codes and Regulations Committee to order, clerk, could you please take a role?
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mr. T. Smith? Mr. Schaller?
Here.
Uh, we have a summary of proceedings from March third, twenty-five.
I move that we accept as submitted.
I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take a role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaller?
Yes.
Uh, item one of old business, uh, Rules of Council Discussion, I think we've had this discussion, is there anything else we want to add to that discussion tonight? I don't have anything.
On, so this is the three reading, is that the first one? Yeah, so, it's finally in writing, and I know I spoke with, or emailed Mark and everyone about this back in November, and I added that-
Yeah, we're, we're on old business, just a discussion, so if there are anything other than these ordinances we want to-
Oh, this is discussion only? Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, well, we'll move on to item number two of new business, uh, Legislation Committee Rules, we have an ordinance here.
Ordinance amending Marion codified ordinance title three legislative, chapter one 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 point oh three, Committees of Council, see rule fifteen of the codified ordinance of the City of Marion.
And then in rule fifteen, we're basically striking out some of the language to make it more clear. 'Cause there's been a lot of confusion over this.
Yes, so, it looks like we're striking out that sentence that someone's had issue with on, committee cannot amend, so, with it being removed, if it is passed, does that mean committees just follow under regular Robert's rules and council rules?
My question for the law director?
Yeah. Um, I move that we send this on to council with a recommendation to approve.
Uh, I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaller?
Yes.
The recommendation to approve, right?
Recommendation to approve. So that'll go to council with a two O recommendation to approve. Item number three under new business, Legislation Rules Motion Number Forty-four.
Ordinance amending Marion codified ordinance title three legislative, chapter one 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 point oh five, motions, I, rule forty-four, the codified ordinances of the City of Marion.
So, Mr. Schaller, do you have something on this?
Yes, this is the one that I've been trying to get.
Where we go?
Worked on since November, the, I, everything's correct, and I appreciate, I believe Mr. Paul, he put this in writing for me, so, thank you, I, I won't ask you to do that ever again. That's what I get paid for, um, but your, your time's probably better spent doing other things, but anyways, I, I intended, or I forgot to, or it's not here anyways, further clarify rule forty-four, 'cause in previous times, we've had the discussion whether it could be reconsidered or not, and, in the rule, it says, shall not be debatable, and so I put, or reconsidered, as a extra clarification, um, but that's not here, I would like to see that added for further clarification.
So are we gonna try and make, we're gonna amend this in committee right now? Is that what we're gonna do? Is that what you, is that your wishes?
Right, well, well, so, how, if, how, how, so the current rule is, we cannot, should not amend in committee, but if the author is in the committee, what do you do?
So, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of points, so, the two rules that we're talking tonight about, that are on the agenda, don't take into account reconsideration, there may, there may be another rule on council rules, I can't remember, that talks about reconsideration, if we want to address reconsideration, it probably should be done in the rule that is focused on reconsideration, so my suggestion would be, just go with the language you have here, in response to your particular question, our precedent is, we have amended in committee, you have changed it in committee, what you just sent on to council really gets rid of the confusion that was caused by whichever council put that in place, however many years ago, so we seem to be making some progress, so my suggestion is, if you want to deal with reconsideration, let's do it in the rule that has to do with reconsideration, and just move this forward, this being, you believe it's a best to codify in your rules, what has been the precedent for approximately twenty years.
If I may, Chairman?
Yes.
So, in the reconsideration rule, I forget what number that is, fifty-something? Forty-three, um, we need to amend that and specifically say, rule forty-four cannot be reconsidered?
That'd be the way to do it, yes.
Okay.
Instead of having reconsideration spread out through various rules, have it in one rule that if you, I issue as reconsideration, you know, to go to-
Go to that rule and see what you can do.
That rule, reconsideration.
Okay, okay, with that said, I will move that we send this on to council with a recommendation to approve.
Uh, any other, any other, any, anybody else on this matter, public, anyone, have anything on this? I will second your motion. Clerk, would you please take a role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaller?
Yes.
So we're gonna send this to council with a two O recommendation to approve. We have any matters not on the agenda? If not, we're adjourned, six fifty-two. I think that's everybody. Six fifty-three, court order, Streets and Service Committee, clerk, will you take a role?
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Arsman?
I want. Here. Both of us, sir.
Uh, summary of proceedings, Mr. Smith, you had a chance to review?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make motion to approve.
I'll second, I'll take a role.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Okay, new business, uh, Evans Streets, uh, Road, Evans, Evans Road Vacation, will you read?
Ordinance vacating part of a public alley thirteen feet in width, along the east and south sides of lot eight eight six seven, in Marion Osgood edition of the City in Marion, as recorded in plat book three, page one oh four, Marion County, State of Ohio, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Okay, there's, uh, coming out of planning commission, there's some horse trading on this, I believe, is that the right term, Evelyn?
Yes, that's what I-
Yeah, uh, Mr. Johnson, the applicant's here, um, they came to a, they came to an agreement, him and the neighbor, on what they were gonna do with the alley vacation, and who was gonna take one, he had a certified letter in the office, right, from the other neighbor, relinquish her half of the alley there. Pretty much sum it up, have any questions from the audience, administration? Wishes of the council? Committee? I'm a commission, uh, send on to council, the recommendation to approve.
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Item number two, if you'll read.
Ordinance vacating a public street situated in the City of Marion, Marion County, State of Ohio, and known as being in the southwest quarter of section twenty-one, Township Five West, range fifteen east, being part of Outlots four twenty and four twenty-one, and being a part of Hoyle Street right of way, area, as recorded in Horatio Hoyle's first edition, P. point B. point three, page one one four, Marion County records, State of Ohio, and retaining permanent easement rights.
I don't see the applicant here, but this was done with ODOT, um, it's back five points behind, uh, the drive-through, that's Hoyle Street, and it dumps out behind the crossing gates for the railroad, so that kind of causes a big safety issue, and if you've ever been on that side of town, you know, you've got to put your foot to the metal if you're gonna get across them tracks before you get stopped, so.
I couldn't find Hoyle Street on the map or anything.
It's a, it's a-
It's, Cuyuga goes this way, and Hoyle is the turn right along the tracks.
It actually runs together, it's, it's one continuous, I think at one time it may have went straight on, but it runs together, so it would have been nice if they could have combined those to do that, and I think we were looking into, to doing something with Cuyuga.
I did, I reached out to-
I did, I reached out to law director, and we're gonna follow, we were actually gonna re-talk to the state and see about them.
Cause they've already done a survey of the whole area.
For the entire, nobody sees any issues with vacating that part of Cuyuga either, but we need to get the ball in motion and have the survey done, and that kind of thing.
Okay, now it'd just be a separate issue from
Well, have any notices been put out, Matt, in regards to this being published with the Marion Star? Because just with the email that we shared early this morning, and talking through this day, we are intending, or collectively, we are intending to modify the survey to include a portion of Cuyuga Street.
So we could potentially amend the
Yes, do it here if we haven't told the Marion Star to publish anything yet.
Uh, I think the publication is for next Thursday, the twentieth.
Have you sent them the material to be published?
Yeah, but I can change it if we need to.
It seems like everything's going to be modified, and it'd be better to do one, it's all part of one thing. So it's probably keep it in committee, and you can call the Star and tell them to hold off. Till the survey catches up, we can add the amended survey to it and do it all at once.
Is there any timeline for ODOT and?
Not that I'm aware of.
They're talking.
They said next year at the, at the earliest. That's right.
Okay, yes.
Christian Neff, July eleventh, East Fairground. Um, when you say publication, are you saying for a public notice for neighbors or things of that nature?
Yep.
The only neighbors on that street would own it.
Yeah, the friction metals.
To the person on either side of the street that would have any use of it would own the businesses on either side.
And they're, they reached out to the administration requesting this additional area to be vacated?
Yeah, they did at the meeting, it was amazing.
The problem is, the Ohio Vice Code requires me to put a notice in the newspaper.
That's fine, I'm just, just for purposes of all information. When, if, if Cuyuga Street would be vacated, it would go to the gentleman that owns the scrapyard. But he also owns the businesses, the little In-N-Out, whatever that is, on the other side as well. So it would be for his purposes, just to shore up access, people getting behind his businesses. In committee, and we advised him that if that was something he was interested in, he was more than welcome to pay the fee involved in doing it, and his interest in doing it seemed to decrease rapidly when there was any monetary involvement from him. This was all in the same age.
That's what I picked up from him.
Yep, so.
But I think what the administration's trying to do is just piggyback off of the survey that was already done on the property.
Absolutely.
So, am I right in saying that?
For those purposes, absolutely, but I also know that that fee is, for the city, is not, not small.
Right.
So I don't want the city to lose out on money because somebody's trying to piggyback and get a free street.
Okay, Ms. Gregg?
Name of page three sixty-five Silver Street. I do understand that we're trying to tie it all together, but ODOT was, I mean, you hear Mr. Barr. They said they have no interest in the right, and the owner doesn't want to pay because that's Christian's side. When they started talking about him coming and doing what everybody else has to do to get an alley or a road closed, now he wanted the city to do it, or he wanted ODOT to do it, or whatever. So I understand that we're trying to do whatever, but I don't think that we should necessarily, and twenty-seven, I get it, but I don't think we should necessarily hold up a piece of legislation for someone that owns a multimillion dollar business. Thank you.
Evelyn?
Also, one of the recommendations of regional planning, I don't know if the council would want to include it in the approval, is that they had to re-put bus shelters on either side, since the CSX and ODOT will have that land. You know, once it's vacated, there'll be plenty of space there to place some sort of a shelter on either side of the transit to help those that are stuck.
We're trying to get a lot out of them. We're trying to get power in it and overpass. We tried to get everything out of that, dude. We probably won't get him back here. Well, I understand, uh, Ms. Gregg, your point, but I also understand if, if it's not gonna cost us, if we can just use their survey, it can really do a service to the constituent, and it probably stops some police calls and some accidents, because people are gonna pull down there and just be dead end and have to turn around, so I don't think it, especially since they're not gonna do anything till twenty-six at the very earliest, to see, see what they come back with if we can utilize that survey. So my recommendation, we would let this sit in committee.
I concur.
Item number three, if you'll read. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have something else? Christian, I'm sorry.
Ordinance authorizing directing the Director of Public State Service to prepare plans and specifications as advised for bid and enter into all necessary contracts for the twenty twenty-five street resurfacing project twenty-five dash one R in the city of Marion, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So this was, uh, the resurfacing, we had the list of streets that it has to come off of, and this is just allowing us to move forward with it, right? Do you have anything further to add?
Uh, we're still in the process of deciding which streets to do this year.
Okay.
To work within the budget that we have.
And then I think we talked, you'll get back with us when that narrows down?
Yeah, we anticipate that we're going out of it early in April.
Okay, right. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Name of page three sixty-five Silver Street. I hope Chestnut Street is on that list, because it is a hot mess. They went through there, I don't know if it was water lines or gas lines that they replaced, but there's probably thirty little cutout spots the whole way down the street.
Yeah, we have a very long list of streets that we have to pick from.
That one's been that way for about nine months, so the lid's starting to feel up now, we're saying.
Recommendations from committee?
Recommend you forward it on.
I'll second that. Would the recommendation to approve?
Uh, to approve, yes.
If you'll take roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Item number four, clerk, if you'll read.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Kirk Brothers for the long-term controlled plan phase two and three CSO improvement projects for the city of Marion, Ohio, approving necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is the phase two and three that we really are federally mandated to take care of, this part of our long-term control plan. Phase two, I believe, is Cinder Hill, basically, over there. It's a seventeen-foot, approximately seventeen-foot deep retention pond. They're gonna put mounds up, fences around, and that's just to flow, control the flow of water going to the plant when it's too much too big of an event for the plant, and then it basically will have a flapper valve, a check valve. When the plant's ready for it, it'll send it on, and then phase three is out on Holland Road. It's the hundred-and-ten-year-old brick, six-foot diameter, and we're putting a, that's being lined, right? Or that was already lined, and now it's just a check valve out there also, right, a flapper?
Yeah, Holland Road was awarded a grant, and it's currently in the process of, when the weather dries up, it'll be lined with that, yeah, sewer.
They used to go in and spray that thing, huh?
Yeah, go in and spray it, makes it structurally sound, and supposed to keep it strong for hopefully another, I believe it's a hundred and thirty-five years old.
Whoa.
Eighteen ninety.
So these two combined are gonna be close to eighteen million, nineteen million, we got a four million dollar forgiveness?
Yeah, so, yeah, the bid came back at fifteen-five, basically for the construction, with the engineering services, the construction management. Uh, we anticipate the loan to be in that eighteen to nineteen million. Uh, then we found out that we qualify because we're ready to go for a four million dollar forgiveness, which was the maximum allotted for that.
Okay.
So we're excited to hear that. So we're hoping the end loan ends up being, you know, fourteen.
Right, and that's a two percent, roughly, two percent?
Yeah, two to three percent, somewhere in there. I found out today that kinda fluctuates with the market.
Uh-oh.
So, but once, once we get locked in, and we're awarded next month.
Okay.
If, if all this gets approved, it'll be awarded next month, and that'll lock in, so.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Mr. Schaubert?
Jason Schaubert, Public Service Committee. Back when we bought Cinder Hill, whatever, whenever we bought that, a few years ago, I thought it was, first I shouldn't ask, it was mentioned it was gonna be a pond, is that an open pond? Because I thought it was supposed to be a sub
No, it's not a pond, it's a, it's a retention tank.
At the time, they thought we were gonna do a covered tank.
Right.
The, in order to reinforce the walls for that, the cost was just two thousand. So what it is now, it's, I believe it's three hundred and thirty feet in diameter, so basically a football field ground plus. And it's, it'll be three to four feet out of the ground, so it's about seventeen feet wall depth. So it's a very large tank, it'll be mounded, um, for the life of me, I cannot
To the east side there.
That'd be to the south, that heads east of Clinton. Those homes will not be able to see it, it'll be a mound with trees, and then everything else is kinda protected by the way that it's
And fenced, right.
Yeah, it will be fenced, yes.
Yes, fenced and barbed wire.
The fifteen million, whatever, land clearing. That is land clearing, rock removal, for any rock they have, I mean, right there, disposing of the dirt. They build the structure of the tank, they're actually rebuilding the overflow is. They're putting that bending weir in there, like what you call a check valve. Whenever it fills up, it's supposed to let it all out. How will that tank affect that ditch that's on the wrong side of New Clinton that's cool? So, it should, it should, the tank will dump into the sewer, actually in front of this.
Okay.
So that, the tank will discharge into a line there on Clinton. It'd be a manhole, I believe, right around that ditch that we go into the road of Clinton. So it'll tie into there, which runs to the plant. When the overflow fills up on fees, which dumps into that tank, that will then discharge back into the ditch the way it still does today. So, is it timed appropriately, so when we do have these fast hard downpour? Because if you go to the end of Clinton at Woodrow, you have that ditch that just floods that poor house right there. And we got those grizzly bars that are down there that we need to do something with, and they get packed for free. Nothing flows through there, but when it's cleaned out, you got all this water going to that same spot. Boy, handle that, or it'll be delayed in some fashion to It should be delayed. This tank's supposed to hold just about three million gallons, while still allowing flow to go to the plant. So it's, it's, like you said, it's kind of a retention pond, big pipe going in, little pipe going out. Once it fills up, then it'll overflow. So it should buy us more time. The whole design of it, the EPA's requirement is to get down to, I think it is seven combined sewer overflow events per year.
Right.
Uh, currently, we, I think I've seen as many as eighty at that location. So by design, they're saying in a normal, in a typical year, we should be under that seven events. So yes, it should reduce the volume going through the ditch. It should, it should. I don't like shoulds, but we're dealing in typical years.
Right, right, I know.
And when you look at our weather patterns, they are not
And we're catching three, three million gallons.
It'll catch three million gallons while still sending more to the planet.
Right.
That's part of it, it actually
So it's definitely gonna help.
Increases the size that it overflows, and sends more to the facility. Now, it's phase one, so we can accept it. Phase two and three is so now we can treat more of a facility. I just, I just hope that, that potentially dumping all in the same spot, we already know we have that problem at the end of, or coming to get we might compound that issue. I think one, one advantage is we should remain aware of when it is going to overflow. It, we're not gonna have like a skater system that actually ties directly into us. It's gonna have, as simple as it sounds, a cellphone, when it's triggered, it's gonna call our operator and let us know. And I can tell you, until we really find out how it works, we're gonna have to check it out every time.
Right.
We're gonna have somebody out there monitoring what's going on.
Okay.
So.
All right, so, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Eric Ross, Public Service Board, just curious, uh, how many gallons of capacity does the plant have two days' lease at this point?
Dry weather, we are running roughly six million. Um, our annual average this year was, it was either eight point nine or nine point one, it was just above or just below nine million. And we're designed to handle ten and a half.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Typical half-inch rain event, what is that? Is that about two million gallons?
I wish I could tell you that. Uh, it depends on the saturation of the ground. Uh, right now, with the ground having been frozen, starting to thaw out, a half inch is gonna hit us a lot more than it does in the summertime. It also hits at different speeds. In the summertime, when the ground's dry and you've got cracking in the ground, uh, that water gets to the pipes a lot faster than it does this time of year, to where it'll sit on top and, because you got kind of a frozen layer under the ground. But I would say a half inch probably gives us more of a ten million boost.
What's most?
It's, it's a lot.
Wow. Any other questions, comments, administration? Uh, matter's not on the agenda?
You're gonna make a motion to send this on?
Yeah, we could do that, too.
I'll make a motion, we can move this to council.
I'll second that.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Now, matter's not on the agenda.
Name of page three sixty-five Silver Street. This might be municipal services, but they weren't meeting tonight. I don't know if you guys heard what happened in Delaware or not, but a trash truck caught fire, and they're assuming that it was a lithium battery that was thrown with, and the sanitation worker actually had to dump the trash in the middle of the street. So there's a flying pile of trash in the middle of the street. Because that's what he was told to do, that's their training, they're supposed to dump the trash if they catch fire.
Let it burn out.
Well, fire trucks cost four hundred thousand dollars, apparently, is what I read. Um, so I don't know if we have some kind of, like, if we throw it on a server bill or something, telling people don't throw batteries into the garbage?
I thought about that, because I just saw a clip, too, of some, of an oxygen tank in the back of a trash truck.
Yeah.
And it exploded outwards, too.
So I thought just like an ounce of prevention here might save us the four hundred thousand dollars.
Which I had reached out to Greg and him, so I'll follow up with them.
And we're playing a pile of, pile of trash in the middle of the street, so, just, like I said, I thought it might be municipal services, but
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none? Seeing none? We're adjourned, seven fifteen. That's gonna be funny, that's weird.
All right, we'll bring this, uh, meeting of the zoning and annexation committee to order at, uh, seven sixteen PM. Uh, court order, roll call?
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
All right, now we have our summary of proceedings. Has everybody read through them and approved of them? Any questions?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah.
Mr. Schaubler?
Yes, but.
All right.
Hold on a second. I was trying to find it and make sure I was in the right committee. Yeah, Mr. Neff, did he get up and speak?
Yes.
Yeah.
Come on.
All right, uh, no old business, uh, have none, new business. Item one. This is zoning, uh. Actually, what this is, an ordinance submitting zoning code. Called it one one three nine zero one regulations. And zero one office institutional district to include opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities. I believe that this was up before, but it was passed out of the city planning with a four to three. And then we had to send it back, so it now has a five to zero recommendation to approve. And this is about the opioid treatment centers. Uh, I believe that the language that was changed in it, uh, was, it was as in item I to allow them to be in the zero. So many letters and numbers, the zero one. And, uh, just to allow the opioids, like the one located on West Center of Imperial.
Right, that would be the office institutional and the office institutional apartment.
Yes, uh, that's what I was trying to say, and I tripped over everything. All right then, so, um, uh, any other questions or on this? We got the five to O, five to zero vote out of city planning, and just I recommend that we move this on to council. And I think the vote on all this, Evelyn, is gonna be, all the, you wanted all these ordinances and zoning passed, and it's gonna, there has to be hearings.
Correct, we'll put them all on the same hearing in, uh.
April twenty eighth.
April twenty eighth, and then, then at that point, it'll be brought back to city council on that date.
Correct.
On April twenty eighth. So I make a recommendation to do this.
Uh, send on the council with a recommendation to approve.
And I'll second.
Should, in the ordinance where the, um, highlighted italicized font, should that have new text in there?
Oh, instead of, just make it all consistent.
Oh, no.
There's just two words that says new text.
New text, yeah.
And also. Yeah, that's it.
It was highlighted. Oh my god.
Yes.
Oh, that's just the, that is the new text, saying that, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that is, I mean, I'll take the word new text out, but that does get it.
Yeah, that was my question, the, the two word new text need to be in there or not?
It doesn't leave the highlighted either, I haven't taken it off yet. I wanted you to be able to see exactly what we were talking about as that. Is a three to four page ordinance that nothing changes but that little section.
Yes.
I promise you, the final copy won't have that on.
Thank you.
So I may take role, Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubler?
Yes.
All right, okay, matters, any matters not on the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Prater?
Yes, sir.
Has the planning commission met, and have they had any discussion on the solar farm stuff?
Yes.
We did meet, we did not make a final decision.
Okay, so we are discussing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. Solid one there.
Anything else? Any more questions about the solar farms?
Absolutely not.
All right, all right, uh, the reports, at this point, I think we'll, we'll adjourn at seven twenty one.
Is that it for tonight?
No, we got one more.
How about you, buddy?
Yeah.
You want to be on the big team?
I didn't think we had a meeting. Yeah, there are.
There's a speed man who came in.
Yeah, there are.
And once she called the meeting.
Yeah, there are.
Pre-occasions came up after the fact.
That's about the way my day's gone.
Seven twenty-two P M, call the finance committee to order. Clerk, if you'll take the role, please.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Apple?
Present.
Proceedings of minutes from, uh, March third of twenty twenty-five. Everybody's having an opportunity to read those.
Motionist, adopt.
Second.
Clerk take rule.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Under old business, item number one. Updates from the auditors, state projects and bank reconciliations for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Um, I did state previously that all of the bank reconciliation projects are done with Veritas. We're still working on those final adjustments that we need to do in order to close out, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four as far as liabilities are concerned. Um, I set up a, we had a discussion with, um, our rep from New World, he presented us with an idea, we're running that scenario through our test system this week.
And that's for the adjustments?
Right.
Is there any questions on that? Moving on to item number two, audits for the twenty.
Question by name. Jason Schaubler, City City Council, a month ago, I believe it was, you said you exhausted all your resources to try to figure out what to do with this number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so now we have a new idea, is that what?
Yes. So basically what he's, he's wanting us to do is pull a report that shows what our outstanding, um, purchase orders and, and expenses are. And then hopefully that will lead us back to the expend time. And basically what he wants us to do is run it through test, so that we can pull up exactly what that journal entry will be. And then we'll run that journal entry through our live system.
And this will be done with the assistance of New World?
Not with the assistance of, but we can always call them if we have questions. He's the one that presented us with the idea, we want to run it through test to see whether or not it actually works before we run it through our live system.
And how well, how, what kind of timeframe was these tests going to take, or?
I mean, running the test should only take a, a day or two, so we should have an answer by the end of the week about whether or not it actually works.
So Monday we should, we'll give us a report Monday if we can move forward?
Right.
Any other questions? Moving on to item number two, audits for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
So I received draft financial statements, those have been reviewed, um, and sent back already. Um, I'm reviewing footnotes currently, there's a couple sections that we have to verify, and then I will be sending those back tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And that's for twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yes.
Is that going to Charles and Harris, or is it going to?
Yes, Charles.
Okay. Is, so is Mike Lemon done with whatever he has to do?
As far as I know, yes, I haven't spoken to him in probably a month or two. So I believe his portion of it, as far as preparing the financial statements is finished, Charles Harris has taken over.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Moving on to item number three, penalties and appeals.
Um, I've not gotten any new updates as far as the penalties and appeals are concerned, I did get additional correspondence today regarding the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one nine forty-ones. Um, on the spreadsheet, you'll see that we had actually submitted those for an abatement request in September. Um, that is actually, um, they said they needed an additional ninety days, or I'm sorry, an additional sixty days before they can complete a response.
Is that this report that you sent?
Um, there should be two, that's the one with the schedule of fees. Yes, that one, there was a section at the top that had, you know.
I can't, this was kind of confusing.
It, I know.
Does it go like this, or does it go like?
Let me come over here so I can see, sorry. I got my glasses, but they're not.
It's alright, I managed to get one of them put together on one page, and I couldn't get the other one onto a single page.
I'm just like, I was trying to look over this today.
So this is the top, this is the bottom.
Okay.
There's two sections, there's a section where there's numbers, um, with amounts that we had made aware of, or that we'd been made aware of.
Okay.
And whether or not we'd requested abatements. The ones down here are previous, um, notices that we received. So top, top page, yep. Are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this one is number seven on your list.
Okay.
So we had received a response previously on January thirteenth, asking for an additional sixty days, we just received a response, it was dated the thirteenth, so they would have sent it out Thursday, saying they need an additional sixty days.
Okay, and then these coming down this way, how does that, are these just continual notes?
These are all references to items that I don't have this information for.
Okay.
So I don't have a fee for it, I don't have an amount tied to it, I just, these are references that usually said something about your inquiry on this date. But I don't have record of what the inquiry was for. That's why they're separate, because I don't have any items tying them to the top section.
And then if it goes across this way, it's the same?
Yes, so this references December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, this is twenty nineteen, this is twenty nineteen, this is twenty nineteen.
I figured that much out.
Yeah.
I just couldn't figure out this one.
And I did update my spreadsheet, but because I got it today, I didn't get it to the clerk this time, so I'll send it out tomorrow.
Do you have any questions on this?
Just to recap, from where we are on this to where we are today. From where, what we know over what we have received, twenty twenty-four, we were penalty free.
So far, yes, I have not gotten any word about any penalties for twenty twenty-four.
Okay. And so quarter three of twenty-three is our last penalty, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And when you have something under the abated column, that's taken off the table.
Yes, so that, that one was a weird situation. Um, I believe that was for ten ninety-fives, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yes.
So originally, we had been assessed, what year was those, was that for?
Twenty?
Twenty-one.
Okay, so we had been assessed a penalty for twenty twenty, that was the big one of like a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah. Um, that one was assessed at the same time we'd received a notice saying that they were going to assess. And we hadn't actually gotten anything balance-wise, what, as far as what that would be. And so I called, explained the situation to them, told them we'd been locked out of the system. Um, and that they had since been filed, and she said, okay, they're taken off the table. So it's not that they were abated, it's just that they were never assessed after they were potentially going to be assessed. Does that make sense?
Okay, so taken off the table could mean either we haven't got the amount yet, or they didn't assess one.
As far as I'm aware, they're not going to assess them.
Okay.
That's why it says taken off the table, because there's no amount, I haven't received anything as far as a penalty for that, there's not been anything correspondence-wise, anytime I called, nobody said anything about it, so as far as I'm aware, they're, they're non-existent.
Okay. And then, under abated, what's the difference between a yes and a refunded?
I'd have to look at my spreadsheet to tell you. Because I don't remember what I was thinking when I put yes and refunded.
Okay.
Well, there's a note that says there were payment refunded and received two twenty-eight to twenty-four.
Right, so, but my question is, do, if something was abated, and we have a yes.
Right.
Then they're head, that.
There should have been a refund or something.
Yeah, I just don't know what the difference of your two.
That, I'm wondering if that is one that had rolled, because remember, there were a couple that had rolled from one quarter to the other.
I think a lot have.
Well, and that's, that's part of the reason why we decided we were gonna do the spreadsheet. And I think that's part of the reason why I have yes there, but not an amount refunded. So I'll double-check that for you, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, and then the blanks there, are those nos, or not-yets, or?
That I have no knowledge of, so whether it's been, whether it's part of the stuff at the bottom, which I don't think it is, because like I said, those I didn't have any notices for, it just usually referenced some sort of inquiry that I had no record of. Um, or if it's blank, I, I have, like I said, I have no, no, no knowledge of what's going on with that. So like the, the few that we have requests for abatements out still are blank, because I don't have knowledge of whether or not they're going to abate them.
Okay. Then, page two, the second page.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm looking at this correct, appears to have different columns than page one. And like, no amount, you have a potential amount, and none of them are filled in, and then we don't have, we don't even have a column for abated. And instead of date abated, it's like abatement request signed, and new ones.
I'm, yeah, that's why I said I got new ones, but they're not that good.
Um, so it just, they're, it's not the same columns as page one?
I think these two are the same.
Yes, this and this, this is page one, this is page two, this is a separate spreadsheet. So this is the IRS, um, fees that we've been assessing, and the notes that we've had so far from different calls. This is the schedule of the issues and responses that you requested a couple months ago. So two different spreadsheets.
That one came out in four pages, and I cut the pages apart and kind of pieced it together on the one page. This one was too big to do that, I apologize.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll have to sit and read them.
That's fine, if you have any questions, just let me know, because I know they kind of confuse them.
I think I have a larger version upstairs.
Is it possible to get the actual spreadsheet, because it's really difficult to even follow that.
I can send you the Excel.
I can only make some of it out, so.
The, the Excel file would be helpful.
I agree. You can make a copy of the bigger one and put it in our box.
I can try. Thank you. I think I got paper for it.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns at this time for that?
My name is Craig 365 Silver Street, if we were to cut a check to the IRS right now, how much would we owe?
We have no idea.
We have no idea.
That's why I'm, we were, been asking for spreadsheets, because I don't think, we, we all know, right?
We don't know.
I mean, as, as far as I'm aware, at this moment right now, we owe whatever our, well, I just paid.
Like withholdings or whatever?
Withholdings, right, and then we'll have another set of withholdings at the end of the month. And then we'll be caught up for the quarter. And then we caught up for the quarter. But that's, that's all I'm aware of.
But like the old stuff, so we don't, like, we don't know it's abated. We don't know if we're going to be assessed more money. And I, I mean, I, I think you're doing what you can, but.
So the spreadsheet right now totals up everything that we've paid, and everything that we've been made aware of.
How much have we paid?
It, from what I recall, I think it was like 200 and some thousand dollars.
And that's been taxed, or fined some penalties?
Right.
And we don't know if they're normal or anything yet, and we have some that we're.
I've gotten no notice of additional penalties.
455, 54,943.71 cents, according to this spreadsheet.
Okay. I knew I had the total on there somewhere, sorry.
That's a little different, half a million dollars. So, how much are we getting on this financial statement? Because I just heard 29, 2019, and that's like, not even this decade, that we're talking about, financial statements.
Right, so that's what I had mentioned to Ms. Lane previously. We have the financial statements prepared. I'm looking through notes right now. Booknotes will be returned tomorrow. And then ideally, we'll have Hinkle System filed suit. I don't have a deadline for that. I just have suit.
Suit.
Yes. And then once Hinkle System, yes, for 2021. Once Hinkle System filing is done, then it goes to the auditors for the audit.
So, do we have 2020 financials sitting somewhere being monitored?
2020 is done.
2020 is done, yes. We have audited financials yet, yes, for 2020? I did not know. Okay. All right, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so looking at the amount paid, now rough math in my head, it's 400 and some thousand. But then that doesn't include, and there are blanks, um, like 3,200, there's a no on 13,400. There's just dashes on 59,500, and dashes on 98,560. And then there's 225 that was taken off the table. So even if we don't count the 225, there's 100, like 160-ish thousand dollars that there's just dashes or blanks.
Right.
So I, I, do we owe it? Has it, like, are we?
No. So the 98,000, I can tell you with the notice that was in 2020, 2020 or 2021, with the intent of, as far as I'm aware, that amount was considered, because around that same time, there was also that huge deposit that went to the Fed for like 1.3 million dollars, that kind of just went there. I, I can't even tell you where it went, who it went to, what quarters it went for, what, I just know it went.
But according to this, it was assessed 918 of 23, which would have not been the time.
The 98?
Uh, the 98,000, it's for, it's for 2020 95s. And you've got, under date, which I'm assuming is the assessment date, is 918 of 23.
Let me see if I can pull up my spreadsheet. I may not be able to, and for that, I apologize.
You can look at mine if you.
I might need yours. I'm sorry.
Because I believe the, the 1.1 million was like in 2020.
Oh, I'm sorry. The 82, the eight, there's 82,910,19 that has dashes. That has noted some intent levy next to it.
Correct.
98,560. I believe that was, because the 196, we received one notice for. But the 98,560, I think, was the second notice that it was incorporated in that 196. I'll have to double-check. Because we received two separate notices for the same year. One was for failure to furnish, one was for failure to file. But the total came out to the 196 and change.
Okay. So, I mean, in my, if the 98 is part of the 196, we shouldn't, we shouldn't list it twice.
Right.
If we only owe it once.
Right.
And, oh. The 59,560 on 724 of 23 is another one that just has a bunch of dashes by it.
Yeah, that one I'll have to look into. I don't know what that one, why I have dashes next to that one.
Jason Shaw, Brooklyn City Council. Um, so, I'm a little, oh no, I'm a lot concerned. And I want to maybe ask you to restructure your sentence, or restate your sentence, because you just said 1.3 million dollars went somewhere you don't know why or how.
Let me rephrase.
Okay.
Please.
Because you're the auditor.
When, in 2020, 2021 is when we had that fiasco where the 1.3 was going to the state instead of the Feds.
Right.
Right. So then that money came back from the state, and that money went to the federal government.
So you do know why or how, but in that moment you were speaking, you, it wasn't coming to your mind?
Correct.
Okay, so.
I apologize.
And that was in the previous administration, that's why I didn't understand. Right. That. Right, and, and it's fine, but when you said that amount of money.
When I said I don't know where it went, I mean, I don't know what quarters to which it applied. Because as far as I'm aware, they just sent one lump sum payment of 1.3 million dollars, which is all I have seen everywhere. As opposed to breaking it down by, you know, this quarter's 941s, this quarter's penalties, this quarter's fees. It was just a one lump sum payment of 1.3 million dollars.
And the other thing that, a little bit concerning is, and I've not seen the spreadsheet, but from the questions coming from the spreadsheet, are the dashes, the nos, and zeros maybe markers for you to come back and reevaluate or investigate further? And maybe you sent this spreadsheet to us a little prematurely, and?
I've had this spreadsheet for a while. I just don't remember exactly.
That's even more concerning.
Well, and the, the reason why I say I don't know what the dashes were for is likely because I don't have any record of them being paid or abated. So that's, that's why I have dashes there, because I don't have any recollection of having those been paid or abated. But I will double-check that to verify that that's the case. Because I am 90% sure now, looking at this spreadsheet, that that's what it's for. But I want to confirm before I.
Who, who within the city, or is it our tax attorney, who's responsible for knowing what's abated, what money we've received in credits, and to follow that?
So that's part of why we created the spreadsheet, is to keep track of everything?
Want to look at it?
No, because, I mean, the smartest three are all in this committee, and you guys look.
I'm going to take it home and do some.
It's pretty neat.
In all fairness, it's a lot easier to look at in Excel, and that's my fault. I probably should have put it in a better format.
But you do have a handle on what's been abated.
Right.
What we've received credit for, for overpayment, and all that.
Right.
Even when they were going to go over, you can track that clear through.
Well, and there's a couple in here that I do have questions on, as far as like, the 13,444. I have a date paid, and I have an abatement request if I have nothing after that. And that's because I'm 90% sure that that one was rolled.
So, am I, is it fair to assume that you are taking the lead on calling all the IRS issues or previous administrations up through your end?
Correct.
Or is it your internal auditor, or is it solely you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And these have been, the one, Voorhees is working on?
Voorhees is working on.
Is that indicated on this spreadsheet? Which ones Voorhees, have been turned over to Voorhees to?
It is not, but I can update it to include that.
Please. Because they just did a select few, right?
Yes. No.
I think I'm the one who originally requested the spreadsheet.
Yes.
And my reasoning was, is because I said, I think we have been assessed and probably paid penalties that we don't even know that we were assessed and paid. And when I look at this, there are quarters missing.
Right.
And if, let's just, if we were, if we were late in quarters one, two, and four, I'm just going to assume we were probably in three also. Um, I think that's a fair assumption. So, what, what I think has happened, as things have been abated, is that instead of getting the refund, they went to pay fines that we didn't even know that we had. So that was my purpose of the spreadsheet, was to work with somebody from the IRS, to start from the, start from the beginning, and see what has been refunded, what has been refunded but yet credited to other, to other penalties. And I, I don't think what we have here meets the intent of what it was for.
Okay. I can definitely make a call.
Okay.
Do you want this back?
It's his, but he may.
Which one?
365 Silver Street, I hear you say you've got codes in there, so to speak, the dashes and the o's, et cetera. Well, usually, when I've done that kind of thing, I make a legend, so then I can refer to it, so I know what they mean. And everybody else can see what they mean too. Just an idea.
Now, I don't know if municipalities work the same as corporations and businesses, and individuals. But any return that I've done, that there's been questions, and when you get somebody that's, that's a mess, you can, they can make an online account. And then you can, through, through this online account, there are transcripts, there are copies of returns, and then there is like, and, like, an account. That, that really, all you would have to do, if, assuming that municipalities work the same way that corporations and individuals do, make that online account, and then you can just get into the account section and print that off, and that's going to show you everything that has been assessed, abated, put somewhere else, refunded, and it's, it's going to do it all for you.
I've tried, at least twice, to create that account. And I don't know if I'm doing it wrong, or if it's just not allowing me to do it. Um, but I put in the information for the city, and then it asks what kind of, it asks whether it's a corporation, partnership, Ellis, and blah, blah, blah. Obviously, we don't fall into any of those categories.
Correct.
So I can't choose one of those. And that's about as far as I get before I realize I can't go any further.
Right.
So, I don't know, again, I don't know if I'm making a mistake in trying to set it up, or if municipalities can't have an account like that, but I have tried.
And then I, you know, you being the fiscal officer, I think is the only person that would have access to that for the city. I don't even think, I don't even think you would. But, and if you're having problems as an individual, there is like an e-appointment that you can request there, that is like a video conference, that they can walk you through all that.
Okay.
Um, again, I, I'm only talking from the individual perspective, and I can only assume that there's some similator, similarities there.
I'll definitely take a look at it and see if that's something that I can do, because again, if I'm making a mistake in trying to set up that account, and if it gives us the access that we need, we definitely should have it.
Correct.
So I'll see, I'll take a look and see what I can do.
Okay.
Could it be that the town, a city as a corporation, since you're incorporated, and then it would be an incorporated selection?
I doubt it.
I don't think so, because with the IRS, we're listed as a local entity. So, I, I would love to say yes, but I don't think it would.
Because incorporated into the IRS means you have to file a, a corporate tax return. So they don't care if you're an incorporated city, that's the.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know, since they didn't have options for it to pick.
Right, right.
365 Silver Street, do you have a contact with the IRS?
Oh God, no. And, and I don't mean that, I, 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 I get it, I was just wondering. Every time I call, I get somebody different. The only time I had one person directly to speak to was when we had the meeting in Parma with that guy.
I just thought we might have a hook up with this guy.
No, I, if I did, if I did, I would definitely be using it. But no, I, I don't have a direct contact.
I was just going to suggest that we ask that person for the transcripts, because as Mr. Ratliff said, it'll show everything from quarter to quarter, where it rolled over, and then we won't have these questions anymore. Just a thought for the.
Any other questions? Move on to item number four. Finance 16, Firehouse Clerk, if you can read.
For instance, authorize the Safety Director to apply for Firehouse Sub Grants to Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation, and then accept and administer the grant and declare an emergency.
So, can we combine item four and item five, because they're the same grant, only one is for the fire department, and one is for the police department? Is that correct?
I actually asked the law director, and he said that it would be best to make it two separate.
No, I mean, I know two separate ordinances, but can we, can we discuss item four and item five is the same discussion?
Same.
Is that okay?
Same grant.
I think I understand, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same grant, only we've got two, one for the fire department, one for the police department.
Okay.
They are both for radios. Um, there's no match. It's actually not open yet. It opens April 3rd, but it's kind of like the brownfield one that we talked about. They only take 600, and it usually closes within 24 hours.
Okay.
Um, I do need to make a change to the first one for the fire department. Um, section one at the end, it says three radios. We got a new quote today from a different vendor that is cheaper, and it allows us to do five.
So you want to change it, amend it from three to five radios?
Do you have to have a specific number of radios? Could we just say radios?
No, yeah, you can put radios.
Because then you wouldn't be bound to three or five. Maybe you could get four.
We can change on a most.
Yeah.
So you want to strike out the actual number in both ordinances?
Yeah, because the police, the police says six.
Because it's up to 45. I mean, we could get five. And so if we just have radios, then that's, that will cover us no matter how much that we would.
We got specific quotes, but yeah.
I'm saying that the grant may not be for the max, correct?
I'm not pulling.
We may not get $45,000.
Well, so, yes, great.
Okay.
So if we keep the number out, then that will, okay.
So, the recommendation then would be?
Yeah, I'll, I'll recommend that we.
Amend, or change, or?
Send the council with the number of radios removed, and with a recommendation to approve.
And Clerk, can you take the roll?
Can you say?
Oh.
Um, I will say, we are voting on them separate, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, um, second.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Another question. Is this a possible 90, or is it a possible 45?
No. So, well, it would be two separate grants, I guess. So one for the police, one for the fire, or one for the fire, one for the police. The way, so we're actually only asking for the police. We're asking around 24,000. The fire, we're asking around 27,000. The max, it's listed weird on the application. The max, it says, is 45,000, but it doesn't recommend going over 25,000. The max, it says, is 45,000, but it doesn't recommend going over 25,000. But it says 45,000, that's why I put that in there. But we are playing it safe for better chances. And so we're asking 24,000, 27,000.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I think we got one once before.
We did.
For like 5,000, right?
No, it was...
Was more?
21,000 for pre-thermal imaging.
Okay.
We got one for about 5,000 for them for eight years.
That must be what I was... And I'll make a motion with a recommendation for approval after we struck out the number in item number five.
Second.
Clerk, take roll.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Moving on to item number six. Finance 18, Appropriations Amendment, Clerk, if you could read please.
Ordinance making adjustments to appropriations for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Okay, this is coming from Ms. Court, right? I believe she has an amended copy. Do you have one for...
I am, add a narrative, because I know Erin mentioned having kind of a key, and there was some...
I have one.
502 and 504, those numbers all kind of sort of tumbled together. So, I did a little write-up.
Wow, fancy.
This is the write-up that goes with it, and this is the one that has two strike-throughs. The first two are just carryover purchase orders from 2024 that we carried into 25, but they didn't need all of what they had, so they don't get to keep what they didn't spend. So we are de-appropriating those first two. So that's what the first two are, it's just some cleanup. I know the second one's not a lot of money, but again, every, every bit counts, and we're just keeping it in line. So 181,000 is the balance of money that they were approved in their capital budget last year when we did the 25 budget. Because a couple items have been purchased, and those are what's left. The two strike-throughs are for professional services, which are part of our infrastructure projects. Our infrastructure, infrastructure projects are in two pieces, the design and the construction portion. So, we don't, we just need, we just need to kind of mix those between the two. So I, I struck out reducing the 50, the professional services, because I need it in the construction dollars. So I'm moving it from 5402 to 5443. That's why the strike-through is, we went in, and I did that transfer internally, and you'll see that on the report next month, because that's all within, in the same fund. Did you have a question?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I just thought maybe you were asking, so. And then I increased the 502 and the 504, which are our infrastructure projects for Holland Road. And I think earlier, it was, Matt talked about it, Holland Road is being done mostly with a grant. The city is on hook for 100,000. And the ODOD, Ohio Department of Development, is paying for the majority of that project. We do have to spend the money and get reimbursed, therefore I need appropriations. So that's why those two have been increased, to cover the Holland Road increases that we all need. We also talked about going out to bid for the road, the paving projects. So I tweaked the budgets a little bit. I've had time to go through funds, fund balances. The paving is supported in multiple funding sources from Misavato, that we get from the county, the regular streets and repair, roads, street and repair funding that we get from our tax base. And then we get money from state highway for resurfacing, and we get money from motor vehicle collections. And based on what we have left and didn't spend last year, I just kind of went through and reevaluated the cash balances, those ones have been increased. And I reduced the streets and roads, because we're just trying to preserve that, that fund. The budget is a little bit less than what it was, but we are doing our bids now, instead of later in the fall, with hope, with the intent that we'll get better pricing, because we're earlier in the season versus later in the season. Last couple of years, we've done it later, and it costs us a little bit more. So we're trying to move that up into April, and hopefully, we'll be able to do more roads for a little bit better pricing. The acquisition for the firehouse is on here. We'll need to have appropriations to actually do the expense on that. And 704 is a pass-through account, and we kind of run some generic stuff through there. Once in a while, people log onto the city portal and pay their county taxes inadvertently. So we just have to have a, kind of a clearing account to pay those back to people. So that's part of what's going to flow through there. And we are getting kind of into tax season, and we've had a few of those, so we do need to do a little bit of cleanup. So that is negative currently, so we need to get that cleaned up for you.
All right, question or two. Account, the 5470.
Good.
Is that, is the contract signed, done deal?
We have to have, we're getting ready for closing.
27?
Coming up at the end of the month.
And I don't want to say anything in public as opposed to, but, is that for one building? Or, that amount, is that for one building or two?
We don't, we, it's a little excess, but we don't know what, what we will need to get through the process. So there's a little bit of buffer in there, because we haven't determined that.
That did not answer the question.
No.
It could be, it could be for both. We haven't finalized on the second one yet.
Okay.
There's some studies that we need to complete there first.
Okay.
But I believe that there would be enough to cover that, depending on how we can foster. That hopefully, sorry, that didn't...
Okay.
Again, I was trying to keep it clean too.
I had one other question. Just on the footnote for the pass-through fund, 704. We, we pay for the mowing on the boulevard? Since when?
It's a pastor. It's a pastor. They give us a bill, and then we pay, we pay it out.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
That wouldn't be the...
For how long? Has that been the case? Because I used to pay dues to the association, being told that that was being paid...
Don't all look at me. So just for vast experience, and I think the auditor tried to express this orally, so, we receive funding from the association that pays the bill for the mowing of the boulevard.
So yes, that's why it's a pastor.
What, can they just pay the lawn?
Yeah, directly.
I don't know.
Okay.
So it's a clearing account, so we only run through what would they, what they send us and the bills. We send them a bill and they pay us, that's why it's a clearing account. It's kind of a pastor, as it states. I didn't mean to cause drama.
No, no, it's okay.
So that people understand the word, and why it's in the hole, I didn't want people to think it was a lot of people going into the portal directly.
Got ya.
Sorry.
I still don't know why the homeowners association can't pay directly to them.
I don't know. So, and, just because there are a lot of, there were a lot of sewer sanitation and stuff on there, I wanted to kind of outline it, why you saw the numbers kind of twice, different department codes or special call centers were different, so I just wanted to clear that up for you guys.
Okay. Any additional questions? If not, recommendation for council?
Send on to council with a recommendation to approve.
My second.
Clerk, take a roll.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Chair, I'll send this without the strike-throughs, I just wanted to be able to get to it.
Item number seven, the insurance update.
This is our liability plan through Ohio Plan, the Ohio Plan Risk Management Incorporated. We met late Thursday, and they were late getting this packet to us. You're welcome to read this, if you're having trouble sleeping, but...
I am, but I still don't...
But prior to our meeting, I had them bring information to switch us from a $1,000, $1,000 deductible to a $2,500 deductible, and they provided that. I have, you guys, there should be my causes here. So, the first column you'll see there is what we paid last year. The second column is the proposed amount, keeping our deductible at $1,000. And the third number there, written at the bottom and also circled, would be the same, would be what it would go to if we went to a $2,500 deductible. My recommendation, talking with Tacey, talking with the auditor's office, is to keep it at 1,000. It's only a savings of $5,200 to go to a $2,500 deductible. We have two claims, and we wiped out the whole savings in, in two claims, so... So my recommendation would be to just keep it at $1,000 deductible. And they kind of made some notes down below what's involved there, why there was an increase, you know, the, the value of our property went up $2 million. Value of some, of equipment between police and fire and contractors went up over a million. So, that's, that's a lot of what the increase is. But it's still less than 6% over what it was last year. So, I will have a formal, more formal proposal for full council next week. But, this is all I got. They didn't email me these updated numbers until late Friday. So, I apologize for not being in. I'm sorry. Yeah, and it expires April 1st, so that's why we're, they got this packet to us late, that's why we're...
Do you need an action from us then?
Not Monday.
So when you write that up, you'll have it as an emergency call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we either have to take action tonight to place it on the agenda, or we have to add it. Or add it on Monday.
Everybody, historically, the administration ensures that there's enough appropriations to continue with our liability insurance. So the, the action would be, is there a need to appropriate additional monies to pay the insurance premium bill? That's the action that always historically takes place.
No.
So do you have enough monies? So really...
And actually, you'll have a, a ordinance reducing some of the funds, because we do not need as much as what was appropriated. But last year, there was kind of an in-between, so I left a little bit excess in there to kind of see. So I'll bring a de-appropriation ordinance next.
So Safety Directors is keeping you aware of updates in regards to cost liability insurance?
So we don't need action Monday then either, right?
No. Because the Safety Director, huh? No, because he can continue with the plan. We just entered in with the Ohio Plan last year because of the dissolution of the municipal league claim.
Correct.
And so, historically, the administration keeps you aware of those costs, but the Safety Director just is enabled and authorized to execute the obtaining of the insurance policies.
Okay.
And I do make one clarification there. I think there are two accounts that would need total between them less than $700. There's two funds, but they're on an appropriation adjustment that I have coming to you next week.
Okay.
The next committee.
The next committee?
Committee, yeah. And it's on its own ordinance all by itself, so it's very clean.
Okay. Any other questions?
None on this.
Okay. Okay, and, moving on then, matters not on the agenda.
Two items from, wait a minute. Uh, one, did you get a chance to look at the contracts from Veritas?
No, I got distracted, but I'll turn back to that.
Okay. And then, just an update on what our, just anything payroll, what's our plan and what are we doing?
So payroll is continuing as per usual at the moment. I processed last week, all payables are out as of today. We have another meeting for analysis this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And hopefully, after we do that analysis, we'll have a little bit more of an answer as far as whether or not they can move the date from July 4th up to June 6th. But it's pending on that, that Thursday meeting about whether or not we can.
Okay. Now, this is just my thought, and I may be the only one that thinks this. Even to put it through June, it's not, it's not good, or fair, or even, oh, possibly dangerous, to have you doing a full-time job plus what is a full-time plus job that is, that needs extreme attention.
Right.
So, it's, it's fine if we have a place that is going to do it, starting in June, July, May, whenever. But is there any potential of either the last person or two that did this position to come back and work on a part-time or contract service, or something to relieve you of this? Because again, I...
So, there is opportunity for one of them to come back on a contract basis.
Okay.
The contract that we've written up will not exceed 10 hours per week. Usually, it'll probably be more between 5 and 6. And that being because she does currently have a full-time job, so it would have to be after hours that she comes in. I don't know, I don't know whether or not she'd be able to come in and actually process payroll in that time. I don't think that would happen. So the processing of payroll unfortunately would still continue to be on me until we follow, until we follow through with ADP.
Okay, and, you know, I don't know how the... I don't know how the rest of this committee or the rest of the council feels. But if she is willing and able to do it, I personally don't care if it's 35 extra hours a week. You know, I've worked two full-time jobs at various spots of my, of my life. And, you know, I would have no problem appropriating the money to get somebody to fill the position. Because we're currently paying nobody to do it, so we're not...
We're using that, but some of that money is for the implementation of ADP. And we are hopefully going to be hiring that administrative assistant position that is a union job, that would also be able to support her as well. And that's, that's the other problem is right now, because the payroll position is a union position, there is no one that I can have in that office that is not currently doing another job that can back up me in that payroll position.
However, they voted to take it out of the union.
And they voted to remove the payroll position and put another position into the union, but that other position has not been filled yet.
Right. But if we have hired an outside vendor to do it, I don't see a problem with hiring an outside contractor to do it interim. I mean, I don't, I don't even see the difference.
Again, she's, she's more than welcome to come in, and I've spoken to her, and her concern is, she has personal reasons she can't come in full-time as well.
Okay, and...
So there's, she's already got a full-time job, I've extended the offer to 10 hours per week, and, and she said she'd be willing to come in and work on what she can. But the processing of payroll itself is unfortunately not something she can do.
Okay. I mean, I just don't think it's fair and right, and for you to have to do this full-time until, you know, until June,
Right.
and then come here every two weeks, and you don't have updates for us because you're, you're filling a full-time position. And, you know, it, it's, I mean, it, it's not fair, it's not fair to anybody. You, the, the taxpayers who need to have updates, this committee, the council, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's not good for anybody.
I'm, I'm doing what I can.
I'm not saying that you're not. I'm saying if you have a way to get this done, you have at least one vote of support to give you the funds that you need to do it.
Money is already sitting in a service, contract service.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever been an issue. We, we've offered as a group to try to allow her to do that. And if she chooses to do that, that's okay, her, I guess. But I, I think that she had intended on maybe having the person that was there before do the payables, the, the, the bills and all the taxes and the...
Right.
That kind of stuff, and then she would continue to do the payroll.
Okay.
The offer's there, for sure.
Okay, and, you know, and I don't know the person before her, if she has time and is willing.
I can, I can reach out, but I'm not sure, I haven't talked to her.
Okay. Just, that's what I think.
My question would... My question would be, are the funds available?
Well, they're in purchase services, but obviously, we've, we've reduced those based on what we thought we would need for ADP and implementation, a little bit of, a little buffer to potentially pay for, you know, for a previous person to help us. But as we hire this administrative assistant in the next hopefully three, four, or five weeks, then that person should start to, she should be able to pass up onto that person and have them starting the process and be part of the implementation of ADP, because I don't believe that would be on her entire time.
Have you interviewed...
It's all the way to June.
Have you interviewed for that position?
That post-entirement's out Friday.
Yeah.
It comes down on Friday?
Right.
First announcement, 211 East Fairground. With this discussion, what if you shifted it the other way? What if instead of you coming off payroll, what if you shifted a point person to the IRS? Reach out to them, build the reports that you guys wanted, that way we're not building better reports.
The problem is, the IRS won't speak to anyone but me. Not in the building.
Yeah.
And even then, it's hit and miss depending on whether or not they'll actually talk to me, because they still have Robert Kramer listed as the person they need for contact.
Robert Kramer.
The auditor, three auditors.
Three, three auditors ago.
Awesome. Also, just to...
I thought you were going to tell us you could do payroll.
No.
Why didn't you do that?
Well, no, I don't, no.
Thought it was on the job.
Just to give you like a little bit of, like a, you're not doing anything wrong. The IRS doesn't offer that service for, for, for government's, so the business tax services on their website, and when you scroll down to it, it says no, no service, so they don't offer it. So, it's a good idea for businesses, but for the IRS at this particular time, is not something they're doing. Now, if it says on their website, we're looking to add that, it also says that you can, through the government services, appoint a point person who they will talk to. I'm pretty sure Robert Kramer didn't do that, but just so you know, if you went through their website and you could appoint a person, so most likely it would be you, but you could appoint somebody else in your office if you wanted to have that person be to this particular purpose, that person.
Is there anything that you can designate to your deputy officer to do?
Not for payroll and not during tax time.
But is there other jobs that you need to do that you can, or is he just not available because of tax time?
Right.
Hurry.
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 Payroll went to New World.
Yep.
Didn't we identify a city like ours that used New World? Could we reach out to them and see if they have an extra employee for a few hours to do some of our payroll?
I don't know. We can ask.
That could get access to our New World system? I don't know.
Ask.
It's worth asking. If he told no, then not asking in wonder.
Let me check the light, do anything on that.
Pardon?
Are there any other questions or concerns that are not, matters not on the agenda? If not...
Oh, I do, I'm sorry. I thought you said not matters on the agenda. I apologize. You know, we face these on the perfect street. We had talked about calling local municipal services at one point in time to help us.
Local government services.
Okay, local government services, how...
We've been in contact with them.
Okay, are they giving us any help? I looked on their website, I think they said they do four hours free, which I think we've already tapped into, but it seems like they're a lot less expensive than everybody else that we've been dealing with.
They've been involved since November of 23.
23, yeah.
Went way over the 40-some hours.
They gave us 40-some hours of free.
Okay. So, I, I was just wondering, because I know not too long ago, we had discussed bringing them back into the mix. I didn't realize.
They've never left the mix.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that. I have another question. I've been told, and I'm not sure, so that's why I'm asking, do we have any past due bills for the City of Marion, or have we had any past due bills, like maybe Columbia Gas, disconnect notices, or anything like that?
That would be an auditor question, I guess. None have been brought to my attention.
There has been notices, but they have been paid. So, we have received past due notices. There's been, we had any disconnect notices?
I'm not sure about disconnect, but I do know that there's been notices, and like I said, they have been paid.
Do you know what they were for, if there are any chance?
I think one of them was for Columbia Gas.
Okay.
I can't remember what the other one was for.
Okay, so just to get you know of...
As far as I know.
May I ask why we got past due on our Columbia Gas bill?
I, from what I've been told, there is an issue with the mail, because the payments will go out in the mail, and then the bills will come, and they'll cross. So, the bill will have already, the payment will have already gone out.
Well, I think you still need to be more than one month behind because...
No, I'm not, I'm not agreeing with you. I, that's just what I've been told, is that the timing of when the bills and the payments go through the mail, and, and how they, how they actually cross in the mail. As far as the actual bills themselves, I'd have to look at it to see, and I haven't actually looked at those bills myself to see.
Okay. It's just kind of concerning when you hear that the city might get until it is disconnected, and then we're talking that, you know, to IRS possibly half a million dollars. So, I did ask for that information, if we had any past due notices or disconnect notices. And I know you guys are busy because it's tax time, so I'm not giving you a hard time, but I did ask for that information.
I did get that email, and I apologize if you said...
No, I know you're busy. I know, I know what tax time means. I know what it means, so I, I do understand, but I just figured I'd ask too, so that way we all know. And then, I did another request from your office, Ms. McGinnis, and I believe, it's not on this agenda, but on the normal agenda that we get at full council meetings, it says that the finance chair is to be bonded outside of the normal city council law. Is that correct, Mr. Russell?
You've asked that question, it's been answered, I am bonded.
Well, ma'am, I actually have a copy of the bond for you as finance. I don't know if you just went in and signed it last week, but I received it Tuesday, I was saying you've never signed it. So, you are not bonded as our finance chairperson. You're bonded as a regular city council member with $50,000 that you all have. Does that sound right? That you're all bonded for, I don't know, maybe I pulled that out of here, but you are not bonded as our finance chair.
Okay.
Actually, because I was involved in the threads and some of the emails and exchanges, it actually goes a step further, whether the agency, the company, the insurance bonding agency may consider her bonded as she sits here tonight. So, you can't defend it when you say she's not bonded.
I've never had a contract. I mean, don't you think...
Okay, well, we're not going to talk generalities, I'm going to tell you what the insurance company related to that bond advised the internal auditor, that it's up to the insurance company with that form that you have. So, we're talking about the same form.
Do you think that if we went to court, that they would be like, hey, you never signed this, so now we're not going to cover it?
If the finance chair indicated a minute ago that she believes she bonded, is going to sign the form, I think it's moot if she...
So, she's going to sign the form, but she has not signed the form yet.
It's up to her.
But it's an ordinance for the City of Marion, isn't it?
I've answered your questions.
So, it's not an ordinance, or it is an ordinance? Because on the full council agenda, it says that the finance chair is required to be bonded. Now, if we want to say that you don't have to sign the bond, okay, I guess I'm going to like, I smash into somebody, I'm just going to pretend like I have insurance and say I thought I was insured, but I don't know. So, I guess we pick and choose what ordinance that we want to follow, but that's what the full agenda normally says. If we're not bonded, whatever, I mean, it doesn't matter at this point, we don't even know how much money we have. So, but whatever, you guys do whatever.
Okay, I think what she said does have at least some follow-up questioning that means, because so what, what I heard from you is that they may consider her bonded.
That's what I got from the internal auditor, that had contact with the company that issued the bond.
Which would mean they may not.
I'm telling you what, I know.
And so, is it, have, have we not signed it intentionally, or is it an oversight, we didn't know we had to, and we're going to go up and do it?
I didn't know I had to sign it, but I...
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You said it in a council meeting, Mrs. Mike. I have listened to all of the council meetings from last year, and I asked you this question, and you told me you were bonded. I've listened to council for three times, I've listened to all the couns, so we're going through making notes. I've listened to all of the council meetings, and you said, you told me you were bonded. Ms. McGinnis asked you, you said you were not going to sign it. She asked you. I've listened to it three times, and you said you were not going to sign it. It is not signed. You may or may not be bonded, and according to our ordinance, you are supposed to be bonded.
So, how do we fix it?
Sign it.
I'm not sure why I need to be bonded, even.
Well, I mean...
Why, why, I, how much is the bond for?
$100,000.
And why do I need to be bonded? I, I don't sign anything, I don't have anything to do with...
If for no other reason, because the ordinance says so.
Then should we look at that ordinance to go, why, which it needs to be bonded?
Well, why would it?
Doesn't handle it yet.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the appropriate action to take, rather change the ordinance.
Yeah, it saves us some money.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, it needs fixed one way or the other. I don't care how it gets fixed, but it needs fixed.
What ordinance are we speaking about?
Beat me.
Everybody looks at me.
Hold on, hold on.
The clerk at council maintains the ordinances. I don't have them all memorized, to answer your question.
I wasn't looking at you, so don't puff your chest. I puff mine too. I was just looking this direction, because it's been referred to as the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, the only ordinance that I'm familiar with that requires a finance chair to be bonded is the investment committee with Mr. Reese, and we revisited that, what, '22, '23, sometime like that, where we restructured it, and then I was bonded at that time for a very short time.
Did you sign the form?
Yes, I did. I signed everything they asked me to. Rule follow.
Obviously, the life insurance policy we have on here.
That's the only ordinance that I know of that refers to someone being bonded, because we're, that committee, or I don't even know if this committee is...
It's not, it's, everybody's kind of, so Treasury Investment Board, it's a board, it stands alone.
Right.
And the only reason it refers to bond is because of the actions that you took and Mr. Ratliff took, and said, should this position be bonded, should there be a bond for finance chair?
Are you blaming me?
Because I, that's what I recall.
Stop puffing your chest, Mr. Russell.
Well, we're talking about an issue that...
I'm not upset.
I'm not upset. I'm not upset. The issue of bonding came up when the restructuring of the TIB took place, as you said.
Yes, yes.
Then it was an added-on, should the chairperson be bonded, and the council decided at that time, yes, so they put it in that ordinance. So, we're all talking about the same thing.
It is, it is.
And I agree with Mr. Rollins, it's just time for council to reconsider whether or not a finance chairperson needs to have a bond, so we can clear it up, come full circle, because as the chairperson said, she doesn't touch cash, she doesn't make monetary expenditure decisions as a singular councilperson, so let, let's revisit that ordinance at a future point.
You gotta figure out so long.
It's not a law.
What ordinance it is, right? So, we still have to look at what ordinance it is.
We agreed it was in Treasury Investment Board ordinance.
Okay.
I know what I'm doing in the morning.
And we know you're looking at '22 or '23.
In my absence, she would have to sign papers or something.
Right, yeah.
Certain amount of money because if I'm not...
Change of meaning or whatever type thing, but that, that has nothing to do with my benefit being a councilperson.
But we made the chair of finance the backup person to that.
Right, and made them bonded.
So, they would, they, or as a potential, yes. So, then if he, in his absence...
Right.
She would be signing papers, and that's, the council at that point decided that that position should be bonded, because off and on, she may be signing financial documents for the city.
Yes, yes. And I remember, if I recall right, you and I, the only ones, Nick Rollins, there wasn't a whole lot of confidence in any of that, those positions at that time, if there wasn't, I remember.
Well, we had issue because of the fact that it's, they weren't even having public meetings with public notices, and we took issue with that, because if we're discussing public funds, it should be done in public, and the action should be done in public. And so, that was, you know, we, we had more than one issue that I recall with the way that that was done, and personally, I thought the changes were good. I would rather us not take a step back. I would rather us...
If she is the backup, then I would, I would think that that makes sense.
When we was doing the bonding, then we increased some bonds, and are they actually increased?
We increased, I believe...
We probably don't want to dig into that at 8:30.
Well, I think we increased the auditor, we increased the deputy auditor, and the internal auditor was supposed to get increased bonds.
Right. I know mine has been increased. I'll check on the other two.
Okay. I want to say that one of them used their discretion and did not...
Did not sign.
Did not, yeah.
Yeah.
For whatever reason. Which is strange, which if it's ordinance or law, it's what you do.
I mean, and, yeah, I, I don't think you have an option to not.
No. You, you either sign, or you step out from whatever position you're in.
Why don't we, are we, who's going to grab the ordinances related to...
You.
If somebody has the full council agenda, it's on the very last page of the full council agenda. I just don't have one that we can see. So, it's on, like we have a normal council, it's on the very last page, where they list your guys' names and telephone numbers and stuff. It's, it's all listed down there at the bottom, but I don't have one with name.
Okay. I think there's a couple out there.
The full council agenda?
Yeah, committee, committee assignments are on one side.
I guess I've never read that page.
That's the page I don't give you.
Oh, because I don't get it.
Okay, because I don't have it.
It's 12301.
It's the one that almost goes on the garbage.
It's 12301.
Chairman of Finance Committee is a member of the Treasury Investment Board. The chairman serves as backup to the treasurer when signature is required in his absence for transfers over $50,000 and must be bonded.
It even gives the reasons.
Yep.
Who's signed?
So, can we all agree that we're just going to sign that this week?
Is it in your office?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll go up after council and I, if you're going to be in there. Do you have it? Any other issues, concerns, questions? If not, we're adjourned eight thirty-four.